Okay, good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Troutdale Planning Commission for Wednesday, January 26, 2022. If we could have roll call, please, Mr. Lopez.
Commissioner Whitren.
President.
Commissioner White Dilla.
Will not be with us this evening.
Commissioner Mamone.
Yeah.
Commissioner Prickett.
Here.
Commissioner Wilcox. Commissioner Allen.
Here.
And Chair Stephenson.
Okay, here. And at this time, I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge allegiance. And I will be leading. I pledge allegiance. And to the Republic. Into this bill with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, the planning commission will take comment from the public on non agenda items. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the planning commission this evening on a non agenda item? Okay. Come on forward. To that table.
Chair for the three of us.
Yeah. And if you could just state your names for the record.
Would you like to go first?
I'm Cindy Shepherd, S H E P P A R D.
Okay.
I live here in Troutdale.
Okay.
My name's Carrie Bingham. I live in Troutdale.
Okay.
And I'm Elisa Gustal. I'm a resident of Troutdale.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
And we just wanted to speak tonight. I know that on the agenda is not the Sandy River RV Resort. But we did want to speak on behalf of some of the residents there. I live there. These ladies, I work there. These ladies live there. And we wanted to tell you a little bit about ourselves and about the park. So I'll let Cindy start.
Sorry, one second. Can you bring the microphone to the table?
As I said, I'm Cindy Shepherd. I'm a resident of Troutdale at the Sandy River RV Park. And I've lived there since 2011. I was a transplant from the south in 1991 and it lived in the Gresham Troutdale area. And I worked at Providence, Portland. I'm a nurse. And so it's become very important to me, the place and the community. I eventually moved there as a post divorce idea, thinking that I would travel around and just be here. But as you can see, I've been here more 11 years. And we've become a good community and we, I have met many people from around that have traveled here, visiting their family here. I think that the park brings in a lot of tourists and a lot. We have a good community there that are, that, that live there full time. As I said, I'm a nurse and I have even had patients that have had family members that come from different parts of the state that come here to see their family and visit here and stuff. And I feel like that we are a very important part of the community, both, both as a stable community and as a tourist community and a conduit for Troutdale and the gorge. And just would like you to keep in mind of helping us preserve it. That's what we would like to see is that it stay the way it is, maybe spruce it up and come up with some ideas to make it better and attract. But we'd like, we feel like that it's affordable housing for us. And like I said, attracts tourism and just would like you to keep that in mind in your planning.
Okay. Are you referencing the town center plan in particular?
Yes.
And I'm Elisa Gustal again. Can you hear me through my mask? I'm a newer resident here. I, I'm kind of a nomadic person. I travel whole time in my airstream. But when I came here, I fell in love. This was home. And I'm an artist. And so immediately connected with your art community here. I, I am one of the artists showing in the Troutdale Art Center. And I also have connections showing in Portland. And also come from other parts of the country. So lots of friends and family that come here and because I'm here. And I have a full LLC, so I pay my business taxes to the Troutdale area. And just, it's affordable. It's, I love it here and I won't take up all the time because I think Kerry's got.
We'll get to know each other later on the details.
So, once again, my name's Kerry. I'm a business owner here in Troutdale with my husband. And we, I've lived here on and off since 1997. My folks live here. When COVID shut down our business, we work in tourism. I'm a travel agent specializing in overseas. So I understand tourism. We were shut down. Our, the country that we usually travel to is not open. So I started working part time at the RV Park or RV Resort and have gotten to know a lot of the community down there. And so I was the one that stumbled across the Troutdale Town Center Plan. I spoke with Chair Stephenson last week. And I came across the, the plans to do something with the area of the RV Resort. And it's concerning to me because I've gotten to know the residents there. And they have nowhere else to go. I don't know if you guys are aware of the cost of living at the RV Resort compared to other RV Resorts, compared to apartments and compared to housing. It's the most affordable housing in the whole of the Portland metro area. And I know this because I've researched it. I've called every other RV Park around. I know what their monthly rates are. Most of our residents have been there for more than five years. Many are on retirement income, social security. They live here because their families here, their kids are here, their grandchildren, their great grandchildren are here, and it's the only place they can afford to live. And these rigs are not old. Someone last week referenced it as a trailer park and it's not. It's a very nice place to be and has a very nice community of people who are engaging and interacting in Troutdale. And so my concern is to get rid of that park would be detrimental to the folks who live there. But also to the city of Troutdale. I ran the numbers at work. We brought in over 10,000 tourists last year alone that stayed in that park. That's a huge number to the city. And in your plan of the Troutdale City Plan, the goals for affordable housing, luxury housing and more, and bringing more tourists, we are affordable housing and we bring in tourists. And I think those two, those are very important points.
And we do have some luxury housing that comes.
We, we, airframes aren't cheap. We also have the, the Tiffens that come in. Those are over a half million dollar rigs. And we get a lot of them in the summer that come in and families and every single one of them can walk up to Troutdale. And that's one of the things when I'm taking reservations and selling our park and why people should stay with us. It's, this is the, I've traveled around the United States a lot. I've stayed in a lot of RV parks. I've stayed in a lot of state parks, federal campgrounds. This is the only place that you can come to in such a beautiful place in the gorge on the Sandy River Beaver Creek. You have Moulton Falls. You can go to Mount Hood and walk to town. That does not exist anywhere else. And if, and it's just a very important place, I think, for the city of Troutdale to bring all these tourists in. So I just want to make sure that when you guys are moving forward in your planning commission and what to do with that area. I, it would be very detrimental to the folks who live there, but also to the tourists who come because how are you going to replace 10,000 people? Where are they going to stay to come to Troutdale? And it's affordable. It's 50, 60 bucks a night. And they pay taxes. They pay over a $4 a night bed tax to stay here. So that's a lot of taxes to the city of Troutdale as well.
So, and also on that environmental note of, I mean, both of us have been so many places in the country. There is no place that is as beautiful environmentally as here. And so, you know, a trailer park or I still call.
RV Resort.
Anyway, an RV Resort keeps that environment, you know, keeps it very environmentally friendly and
and keeps honoring that, right?
And
and understanding that FEMA did come in and designate some of our sites as FEMA sites that cannot be full time sites because of the flood plain. The best thing to keep in mind is that all of those people there, most of the people there were on wheels. We can leave. So if there is a flood coming, if, if Mount Hood erupts, God forbid.
Or fire in the gorge.
We can leave. This is not a permanent structure that is gonna be, be, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars of damage. People can leave. People can get out with their homes, with their things. So that's something that's really important to keep in mind and come back. It'll be able to come back when when it, when the floods recede.
So we, and we also wanted to, because Kerry read the, the, the information, I know it's kind of out of ways. But we wanted you to hear our voice early before you got down the road and plans and, you know, then someone comes and goes, hey, but what about?
Yeah, that's great. And just as far as the plan goes, it's more of a concept and it's what what of, of members of the community feel would be a good use if this property was ever going to be repurposed. It's not something that the city would initiate ever. And so, you know, to have something like that happen, the stars would really have to align. The property owner would have to want to repurpose it. And, you know, some other things would have to happen bef- before anything like that could happen. But it isn't something where the cities all of a sudden, one day going to say, hey, you know what? We're repurposing this. Pack your wheels and go. Something like that I don't see ever happening.
Well, on the last time we were here, Chris.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how, how she laughed.
That's okay. It's been called worse.
Had invited me to like get involved and that's totally what this is about.
Yeah. Which, which is, which is great.
Stay involved if it's about the park or not the park, whatever. We love Troutdale.
And, and this is how good things happen, you know, when people get involved and voices get heard and things like that.
And come by and see me at First Friday.
Just make a quick pitch. Thank you again for coming as well. I echo what the, the chair says from the staff perspective. One thing, and certainly beyond just the three of you, for any park member to, to take note. We are going to be in the next couple of weeks launching efforts to have citizens, residents be involved in city committees. There are, although the planning commission won't have a vacancy this go around, there are going to be plenty of vacancies in the community and other community committees that are established. And one, although I, I certainly don't want to presume it's, it's in the books yet, one that has been discussed that has yet to be created is a town center advisory committee, which would be a standing committee that takes the work of the town center plan and potentially sees it through or has that continuous feedback loop, not only of businesses, but also of residents who live in downtown on the immediate surrounding area. So beyond coming to meetings when there may not even be a particular agenda item, that is one way to perpetuate and continue your involvement. And we certainly, since we have your contact information, will put you on the list with your permission to let you all know when these committees or, you know, if you have the emails of your residents and, and to, to, to inform them of when this, this comes up.
Yeah.
Because that's the one thing we've struggled with as a city is we, we have a lot of folks who are interested, a lot of people who are rightfully concerned if they see something that may not seem right. And then we have conversations, we're able to make those initial connections, but then we lose that end when the time comes to have people volunteer. So that's our ask.
There, there was one other person who wanted to be here tonight on Zoom, but I didn't know how to explain it to him, the process.
Sure.
And he's involved in fisheries, so he understands how important Beaver Creek is. And the salmon, he, he is a consultant with Washington State University and he goes all around to all the major rivers in, in the Pacific Northwest. He's very familiar with that.
One, one question for you in particular. Do you know the rough percentage between residents and visitors?
Yeah, so we, we have during the summer about 45% are nightly tourists. And that's just simply based on what the owner has for our monthly tenants.
Okay.
And as I spoke with Chair Stephenson last week, I take about a half a dozen to a dozen phone calls every single day, people that want to come and live in the park permanently. We just don't have the capacity for it. And, and these are not people from Troutdale, Gresham and Portland. These are people from across the country that have jobs, that have gotten jobs at Amazon, at UPS, at FedEx, and they need a place to live. And there's nowhere to rent in, in Troutdale. There's nowhere to buy in Troutdale. We have about a half a dozen residents right now through the, that are staying in the winter actively trying to buy homes in Troutdale. So it is, it's not just a place for people to stay permanently for more than a year or five years or 10 years. This is a, this is a transition or place
Sure.
for people that are trying to buy homes in this community. They want to live in Troutdale and there's nowhere for them to buy or rent and they're, they're, they're complaining about getting outbid consistently. So it's, it's a really important place for, for the, the residents who are there full time. Like I mentioned before, we do have a number of people who've been there for more than five years, but it really is a transition housing, affordable housing for folks that want to stay in this community and are actively looking to buy something here. And with all the hiring that's happening at Amazon and FedEx, people are coming from across the country to live here.
Okay.
There's, there are 73 sites that are full, full time. So with, with the folks who are couples or a few people have kids, there's well over 100 people who live there full time. And like I mentioned earlier, we had over 3,800 individual reservations last year. That's for one person. If you average our stay is usually an average of three people. So you can do the numbers and you get close to 10,000 or over 10,000 people. And, and a lot of those, you know, those are tourists coming through from all over the country. I took a number of reservations from Florida just, just on Monday. People come from across the country to stay with us. And they're spending money when they get here.
Also, also, we have a culture in that park that I haven't seen anywhere else where, one, we're real close. And two, we connect with all the people that come in and out. We're kind of tour guides for them. We're like, oh, have you been here? To all the local areas. So that.
And we tell all about the restaurants and I'm, we're super excited about the sale of the, the building last night and the new brewery and restaurant that's coming to town. And all the residents who live down there are super excited that that's happening. So yeah, we do act as, and, and I act as a tour guide as well. That's what I do for work. So we tell everybody how great this area is. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment to the planning commission on a non agenda item this evening? Miss White?
Oh, no.
Who said that? Raise your hand. Okay. Okay, hi, I'm Diane Castillo White and okay, can't see, can't breathe. Okay. And I just wanted to offer some observances for your consideration to the planning committee. I'm speaking of the importance of parking in the town center. We have a lot of interesting opportunities for development. They are all in different stages in our, our city. Our city hall was, purchase was approved last night. And it's a beautiful plan and thank you, Chris. I know Chris listened to, I was on the town center committee. And that was important that we'd have tried to retain use of that building. And my hope is that that will be able to be fulfilled. And I, and I know a big part was due to Chris. So thanks that the project looks amazing. So with given that and I, I just counted right now and we have 12 with the, with that one and a different restaurant coming in and we have 12 eating opportunities within our downtown corridor, which is awesome, livability and good for the community. We have the bike hub coming, the tourist visitor tourist center, wedding venues, our businesses, our city of Troutdale government, our services for Fridays. And park trail opportunities, the the, the new area that's going to be developed here, what do we call it now? Troutdale Confluence, the beautiful Troutdale Confluence area with beautiful views. And so I, I understand that there's going to be some exciting transportation opportunities in the future and I'm, I'm looking forward to see that come to fruition. But from the many town halls that the town center committee had, the main thing that we had that we kept hearing was that small town feel. It was important and it became a main theme in our mission statement. Given this, the above things that I mentioned, those are just a few of the considerations that I, I am, I, I'm hoping that we don't consider any change in our parking standards. We're going to have to get very creative with the new restaurant and other things coming in. And yeah, there's, there's just so many cool things coming in and, and we're gonna this is gonna be a, this is an awesome place to live and it's just going to be the even more, more lively. And I look forward to that. But I'm just making a point that I'm talking to a lot of businesses and their big concern has always been parking. And we're going to have to get really creative with these other businesses and I hope they all take off and do quite well. And so I just wanted that stated for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm not seeing anyone wanting to comment. So with that, we will move into tonight's agenda item, which is a framework plan for the confluence site. And council has tasked planning commission, actually the urban renewal agency board has tasked the planning commission with coming up with a framework plan for the marketing and development of the confluence site.
Right, okay. All right.
Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. We'll have a very short PowerPoint and then we'll pivot to the actual documented hands of which we can, we can cover. But we wanted to just set the table as far as kind of what, what a framework plan is and how this relates particularly to, to your involvement as, as planning commissioner. So before we kick it off, can everyone see the title screen at home? Thank you very much. Okay. What a framework plan is. A framework plan is an adopted plan of desired outcomes that a selling entity, not necessarily a city government, but a selling entity that are framed by three general factors. One are the physical characteristics of the site. So what is the land? You know, what, what is its situation? What are the actual economic prospects for the property? And what are the public aspirations? So the idea is you blend the three together. And typically, when we're thinking about it from a regulatory point of view, which is generally within the wheelhouse of, of the planning commission, you develop zoning, you develop basically property standards and regulations in place that really seek to fulfill the highest and best use of a property. In this case, we're in the unique paradigm that the same people, the same individuals who are tasked with setting the zoning for the city, i.e. the city council, are wearing a different hat in that they are effectively the owners of property that the urban renewal agency of, of the community owns. So in this case, the city council in their role as urban renewal board members get to determine not only what the zoning for the property is, but within the confines of the zoning, what do we really want out of it? So what's important to know right off the back is a framework plan is not a product of the city of Troutdale. It is the product of the sellers. It is the product of the urban renewal agency. How is it different from a zoning district? A development code regulates standards for a city. A framework plan sets desired outcomes for future development. So a framework plan is not a replacement of a development code, but it works within the boundaries or the confines and includes content that a development code frankly can't speak to. So there are really four key differences that are laid out here and we'll, we'll cover those four. As far as land uses are concerned, the development code again is administered by the city, by staff and through planning commission and ultimately city council. Excuse me. And it regulates lands based on a list of generally permitted land uses through zoning districts. So we have a zoning district established for the confluence site. The framework plan again is adopted by the agency. And it promotes the development of land based on a list of preferred land uses. So case in point, you may have an A through Z list of things that are allowable in this zoning district. But the urban renewal agency really wants you to do A through F, not A through Z. That's really where their focus are. You could do G through Z. But A through F is really the desired outcome. That's what a framework plan can articulate. Design and jurisdiction matters too. The development can, code can control certain dimensional and design standards that you folks are very familiar with, within a zoning district. The framework plan can take it a step further and articulate expectations for the design consistency or the quality framing, the material that typically you don't see in a development code unless it's a very specific design district. So it's more opinionated as far as what its desired outcome may be from a design perspective. In terms of layout, you know, the development code can give you basic parameters of how long a city block has to be before you have a street cut or a property has to be a certain width. A, a framework can, plan can go more, much more into the particulars and can say, you know, we're really envisioning smaller blocks here or longer ones here. So again, it, it spells out an outcome of desire. And most importantly, a framework plan has qualitative factors associated with it. You can command or desire a consistent architectural or design theme or color palette. You can talk about the desired outcome for what you want out of residential units. For instance, in the development code, multifamily residential is a typical use, but multifamily can mean either apartments or it can mean condominiums. And if you have as a seller, a desired outcome to see more owner, homeownership opportunities, you can articulate that in a framework plan. You, you can't make that distinction in a development code. It can presume who owns the land in the future. What if the city retains some land for roads or maybe a public park, which we know that's going to be the case with the confluence site? It can speak to the nature of how a public private partnership is structured. That's just a complicated phrase that just suggests who's paying for what effectively and in what timeline and, and who is ultimately responsible for it. It can list out specific capital projects and future infrastructure investments. Development code's really not the place for that kind of stuff. It can talk about unique branding and marketing opportunities. You know, how do you sell this? How do you entice future residents or future businesses, maybe to come into a site? You can talk even about the placement of public art or additional cultural investments. Might you be able to set up a street fair in the riverfront park or something like that? What kind of sculpture should be placed maybe at a particular corner, you know, or what type of art? Do you involve tribal membership? Do you involve the greater Arctis community, things of that nature? And ultimately, it can lead to a conservation and preservation efforts of specific features. For instance, there's a giant 130 foot tall water tower. How important is that to you? Do you need to retain that? Is that the community expectation? That's what the framework plan does. And really the, the link with the development code is effectively providing that general parameter for what you can do. The framework plan just resides in that. It can embellish on things that a code can't. Are there any general questions from the planning commission about the, the distinction? So again, we're not talking about replacing zoning. We're talking about a complementary but different product.
Not seeing any so far. Okay.
Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and then dive into the draft framework plan that was included in your packet. It's for the purpose of planning commission, a relatively smaller document. So hopefully you all have had the chance to read it. Just wanted to, one second to reshare the screen here. There's no effective template. I mean, you, you can take inspiration from a number of places on how you structure the plan. Our, our intent was, we knew we have had a lot of planning over the years for this site. Most recently, a lot of it came from the town center plan. So what we were envisioning with the framework plan and putting it together was kind of a capturing of the most recent feedback and kind of a chance to embellish on the marketing. So we, we have an opening section where we talk about the transformative opportunity. So this is kind of the sales pitch, if you will. And basically saying what a framework plan is. The next page basically takes that presentation I just gave you and just puts it within to the report. So there's clarification and an understanding as far as what, what's happening. On page five, we dive into the history of how we got to this moment. We have talked about complimentary planning efforts. And this is really, the framework plan is a fulfillment of nearly 15 years of community conversation. From the time when the voters approved and authorized the creation of the urban renewal area to the point where we had been studying about the high concepts of, of the riverfront park. Where we look at what sort of transportation improvements we have to make to the transportation system to accommodate it. And then ultimately into the town center planning efforts, which are far more recent and have been the last best captured opportunities for the community at large to contribute to what they were hoping to see out of, out of development. So this again, and it's also an important distinction to make, this framework plan amplifies previous plan. So this again, and it's also an important distinction to make. This framework plan amplifies previous planning efforts. It does not supplant or take place any, any work that has been previously done. It also captures some additional master planning efforts that we've done, including for the parks master plan, which is actually in the process of being updated. It talks about kind of the initial access plan efforts that we did, which talked about the importance of the riverfront, the idea of the waterfront park and trail and ideally opportunities to access the river when, where appropriate. And that, that plan has served as an inspiration for the, the current planning of, of the riverfront park, of which we are at a 60% design as of today and moving forward ideally with 90% in the, in the coming months. And then of course, just correlating and responding to the zoning standards and the creation of our new zoning district exclusively at this point for the Confluence site. The big, the big difference unlike a lot of the other zoning districts, which, which was a pretty robust conversation was could we go higher? Could we allow for a higher building to go in that site? And we did a lot of analysis of it and the, the general presumption. Of course, planning commission had a say in it was yes, it was going to be okay. The property is positioned in such a way where you could go higher, but downtown Troutdale doesn't lose that small town feel because of the terrain differential and the ability really to do something unique and, but complimentary. So again, this is a really relatively illustrative document. Again, it's not a regulatory document, so it doesn't need a lot of teeth or a lot of heft, but it is aspirational. Now, the one thing we do, we wanted to be sure to communicate, and this is largely where the, the city is going to be requesting feedback from the planning commission and especially the URA board, is what are the general development expectations for this site? And the expectations that we have effectively preloaded into this document are the ones that came out of the town center plan. Because that was the last most recent endorsement as far as what, what the community at large and ultimately the city council had hoped to get out of it. So the ones that are effectively highlighted right here are the general development expectations. And again, these are site-specific. These aren't broad citywide policies necessarily. So when we see about, you know, higher end housing or residential opportunities or, or multi-story opportunities, we're talking specifically about the site, not necessarily about citywide goals. Because what may work here may not be appropriate for the sweet briar area, for instance. So we just want to be clear, we're talking about the site specifically. And then the next subsequent pages, which I hope you've had a chance to look through or, or make some markup, talks about each one of those expectations and, and brings in images that, that talk about these concepts and explains to a prospective buyer or to other interested stakeholders, kind of the situation that we have and the planning work that we've done and the realities that, that the site present. So for instance, the street grid, the idea of that being an organizational principle, that was an image that came out of the town center plan as a way maybe to be able to hearken in kind of connectedness with downtown. Preserving the water tower was very important for the community. Everything else on that site got cleaned up effectively, but for the water tower. And while the water tower meets also a sandblast and a fresh coat of paint and ideally the cell apparatus to come down at some point, it was seen as an icon and it could, you know, with some creative thinking be a centerpiece and, and a redevelopment opportunity. The next ones talked about access, which as I think most of you know, who know the site well, is probably the biggest challenge of, of the site. There is an existing access that of course goes through the outlets. And I've stressed that that is actually on the city street. So when you're driving in front of Starbucks and Coach and you're, you're, you're in that area where you look like you're in a parking lot, you are technically on a city street and then using that back area to, to access the property from the north and west, the other arrows indicate other access possibilities as well as the, the planned trail, which is not shown in, in dashes since that is, that is known. The others would require more study or more collaboration there. And obviously this is where we're talking about at the, the tip of the outlets here. The potential exchange of property with the ownership of the outlets, you know, should be explored. That is something at the moment that the outlet mall ownership has been hesitant to do without further understanding about what development reality might be. They don't want to necessarily do it on a presumption, which is understandable. But they have needs to and they have obviously an interest of what goes next door to them. And if we can get them to understand that, perhaps that may allow for say, a more direct access to the site. Maybe site improvements for themselves, but that's an ongoing conversation and one that the city would have an expectation. Whoever develops this site or whichever people develop this site need to work hand in hand with, with the outlets. The idea, and this is actually harkening to Ms. White's comments earlier, the idea of maybe there is a solution within the site about how to handle parking. People appreciate the small town feel. But you know, a three or four story parking garage may not necessarily equate to that necessarily right in your downtown or, you know, having sufficient surface parking can take away from what could be buildable. So if you are able to maybe be strategic and find a structure, does a couple of things. One is it could potentially link with downtown, perhaps with a pedestrian bridge that would land in one of the cuts in between the storefronts. It also provides a much more intelligent and efficient land use layout for the site itself, because then more of the site could be dedicated to building or park or other uses as apart from just surface parking. The one other latitude we have here with, with structured parking is this, this facility could also solve a riddle, not just for Troutdale, but for the region at large. I'm sure many of you know about the irritation of now having to reserve your spot to go see Multnomah Falls. What if this was a centralized parking ride facility? In the town center plan, we even had desires and dreams of investigating if a tourist train could leave Troutdale station and simply go 14 miles east since the same railroad track runs right in front of the, the falls. So these are the types of things that we're trying to hint at in this framework plan that we really want to encourage some, some creative thinking. And frankly, anybody who will come in with a development proposal should have a demonstration of experience that they can help us solve not only localized challenges to the site, but citywide challenges for the city and potentially regional ones for the state. And know how to leverage that type of need into action funding partnerships. So it's not all on their back and it's not all on the city of Troutdale's back. So that's what we're trying to highlight in this, in this effort right here. And then a desire that, you know, development, while it may, may not all occur at once, it should be at least consistent. There should be there an expectation of, of a specific standard. And this isn't to say that this is the right fit or the right architecture, but this is just an example that we've used of a very successful riverfront in Greenville, South Carolina, containing residential, commercial and hotel uses along a riverfront park. This is, was a very successful project. And it had a base zoning, but they didn't go overboard with mandating a dot design review committee or anything like that. But, but there was a deliberate understanding that this site, this River Place site right here required some consistency and harmony. And those buildings were built over a five-year period and complement each other relatively well. So that's generally the idea here that we're looking also for the Confluence site, not to mandate necessarily architecture. At least that's what we believe we've heard. If, if folks tonight or council at another night feel otherwise, we can certainly insert that. But more to the point that you don't just rely on corporate architecture or a fad to dictate something that will be in your community for a long time ideally. Here we talk again about, you know, why we were comfortable about increasing the heights. This is just kind of a cross-section graphic that shows that while it is not usual for a community of our size to have a building, frankly, three stories or up, it is going to be tolerable, at least in this case down at the site. We would rather have that type of density elsewhere, but adjacent. So we don't have to create that situation in our downtown where we have a lot of pressure and demand and, and interest. So what we're saying with this image here is we are comfortable with a level of density. It can be near downtown, but it doesn't have to be in downtown. And that we fully intend to preserve the general standards for height, dimension and scale in downtown while providing greater opportunity or flexibility to do it in, in the, the Confluence site. And then lastly, residential development should prioritize home, home ownership opportunities. Think the city, again, this is where it's important to stress that we're talking about a site-specific situation. The, the housing needs analysis that the city has had shows a need for housing across the income spectrum. And we have seen developments in certain areas try to accommodate a certain segment of the market and other segments. But the one unique thing about Troutdale was there was as much, if not more, demand for the higher end stuff than there was even for middle or even lower income. And this is riverfront property. Riverfront property is not cheap to develop and oftentimes developers will seek to, they'll need, they'll want the return on investment and they will generally seek higher income properties to do that. The city council articulated definitely a preference for homeownership opportunities or pathways to homeownership opportunities. But if you deliver at, at a density of what we're talking about, say 100, 200, 300 units to the market, if people who are currently in their homes have the ability or the desire to remain in Troutdale and they find a more attractive product that are, that's within their budget, that actually loosens the, the pressure facing other homeowners who are trying to seek either upgrading or upsizing, or maybe just entering in the homeownership market. Or perhaps providing either empty nesters or, you know, upwardly mobile professionals, if you will, their first homeownership opportunity through a condominium or a townhome ownership dynamic. That's, that's kind of what, what has been thought of with, with this, the standard. And lastly, this is a smaller section, but it is an absolutely critical one you want to put in there. Because at the end of the day, a framework plan is a statement of desired outcomes. But if you recall that, that diagram we showed you earlier, where we talked about the site characteristics, the community input, and then the economic realities, sometimes those don't all overlap real nicely. And the point of a framework plan is certainly to get our, to get attention to the site and to provide an honest assessment of what the community really wants. But at some point, developers will come in and will be saying, look, I can probably accomplish eight out of the 10 things you may want on prospective list. Here's the two areas where we may fall short with our proposal. There has to be at least a statement that there's an understanding of that. That there should be some flexibility that is afforded. That doesn't mean that the city has to give away or cede its desired outcomes because ultimately we are in the unique position that the public through the urban renewal agency owns the property. If we don't like the way things are going in a negotiation with a prospective buyer, it's ultimately seven people who decide whether or not a property transacts. So you have that added comfort that not only do you have a zoning in place, not only do you have a framework plan potentially in place, you also get to ultimately determine the outcome of who develops this. But you have to encourage, you, you, you don't want to lock yourself into a document that is endorsed by the urban renewal agency. And, and really, you know, suggest that you may not be flexible to work with or at least willing to, to have a conversation. Because frankly, development is going to require that. And there are going to be things that when developers do their appraisals or their highest and best use analysis, they may uncover things that either this community hasn't thought of or expected. Or maybe that are just frankly not in line with what the community may, may need. And that requires at least the expectation or the invitation to discuss where those differences are and see if there can be any bridging of the gap there. So it's important to still demonstrate this is really what you want, but we understand we have to be flexible too. And with that, Mr. Chair, I think that covers it. I didn't mean to go as long as I did, but I think it's important because this is an important document. This is some, this is really the city's best attempts to encapsulate the community feedback and to put your best foot forward when we're soliciting this site for prospective development.
Okay. And so, you know, the, the really cool thing here is the city owns the property. And, but at the end of the day, it's not really the city that owns it. It's the taxpayers. It's all the citizens of Troutdale. And I think it's really important that we effectively communicate what Troutdale wants to have, have happen with that property. It's, to me, it's a once really a lifetime opportunity. That thing has been a blight since it was a sewage treatment plant and beyond. And to have that cleaned up and ready to go, I think is a phenomenal thing. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to really shine as a city. It's also really important that we effectively communicate what we would like to see there. Because at the end of the day, you know, somebody's going to come in with a development proposal, but I think developers, it's really cool when the city can say, hey, this is what we're thinking. Because that tells a developer that that's what the community would support. That helps them along their path too. But at the end of the day, it's seven people that decide, but it only takes four of them to make a decision. And we need to empower them as much as we can with as much information as we possibly can, so that it's a better decision. Cause I, I can't tell you, there isn't anybody that lives here that isn't looking at this. And so this is where we get to do our job. And we get to shine. Any questions?
Okay. Mr. Chair, just one clarification. This is technically, while it's not a land use hearing, you do, would need a gavel in to allow for public comment after any commissioner testimony.
Okay. So are we ready to open this thing up and crack into it? You guys ready? Okay. Okay. With that, I would like to open the discussion on the framework plan for the Confluence site. This is January 26, 2022. Okay. We'll start at the top.
Wherever you want to go.
Um. I think we can start at the top and look through it.
Okay.
So, okay. Start, go all the way through it.
You want me to share screen, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Okay. This is page one.
As we look at basically the opening statement, is there any comment on this? Anything you guys think is missing? Anything you think is incorrect? Anything you'd like to see added, deleted? Okay, they're all so quiet. Okay. Nothing? It's super. Go ahead. So I think this is laid out very nicely, Chris.
Thank you.
I think you guys staffed a very good job with this. Okay. As far as how this is laid out, any comment? Okay. Now, the only thing.
I'm sorry.
I look at qualitative. I look at qualitative factors. Future land ownership, obviously, public private partnerships, capital projects, branding and marketing. But how much of this are we putting on the developer? Are we asking them to do art and cultural investments? Conservation preservation efforts. Of existing features that primarily would be the water tower, correct?
Yeah, yeah, to the last point, that's really of those those expectations that we covered on the second half of my presentation. The water tower remaining as a feature is. As opposed to a nonnegotiable from what I understand of the council as anything. The other things that were listed here. Of the art and cultural investments, that was a discussion that the council had when they were first wondering what could go in it and a couple of them had mentioned that. But we don't have any specific. Language that says. You know, we we expect. Five art installations within the twenty acre site.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. These just seem like major points.
They are.
And that's just why I'm just wondering. And we can come back to this, but how important like art and cultural investments are to that particular development?
The ones that are most flushed out really involve the access because that's the biggest challenge of the site. So when they talk about. Bringing the street network across. Finding a better way to access the site or maybe a more direct way, linking it with downtown. That's really the stuff that's been spelled out of these qualitative factors.
And I I put that under capital projects and future infrastructure.
Which it absolutely is, yeah.
Okay. So we can maybe circle back to that. That be okay? Okay, and then we talk about the planning efforts.
Just a minor typo we had on that second paragraph where it says two thousand four, that should read two thousand six.
Okay.
So we'll we'll make that change.
Anything else on that page?
Do you have something, Mr.? Oh, are you on page fix page?
Yeah. I don't see anything clearing. Anybody have any comments on four? Nice trail, man.
This page, just from a design perspective, we'll we'll have it a little bit nicer looking. It read weird without. So it'll be at least looking better. That was just a time crunch more than anything. And again, the the list, the the items you see here are the ones that are subsequently subsequently discussed. So if if you introduce a new topic or a new expectation, then we would update this page too.
Okay. I'm a. Okay. Parking should be considered, is that strong enough? Hate to say that. Provided. That's probably too strong. I just think it would be really hard to do this if there wasn't. Adequate parking. That'd be really hard.
Should we dive into that when we get to that section?
Yeah.
How about encouraged?
It's a possibility. Direct connection with downtown. That one's right out of the original plan. Okay. And we'll touch on this when we get in there too. The vehicular connection is really, I think, a key. There you are, Mr. Wittrick.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, keep going.
Yeah.
One thing to to note in the second paragraph, it it's. About midway down, an expectation must be considered to obtain future direct access in Points West. One of the things that's really going to be critical to know is that. Because of the politics and the history and the presumption of the long term desire of. Direct access through the outlets, which we show here in the hypothetical access map. There's very great sensitivity to that that topic. And I think one of the things that the city has to or the city council will have to evaluate is how important ultimately is that? Because every conversation we've had with interested development has says, if you get that access. Your opportunities for the site, both as terms of commercial opportunity and their overall interest in the site will increase significantly. Without it, if you are really refining yourself just to the existing access or potentially even accesses to access points to downtown. While they're still interested, the level of enthusiasm is a little bit dampened. And honestly, you are looking more toward residential outcomes and less toward toward a commercial or mixed use outcome. And that's simply. Economic theory. If it's a harder place or seemingly a harder place to get to, commercial opportunities are going to be limited.
What I think could be an interesting discussion with Time Equities who owns the outlet mall is. If you have significant residential development, the traffic impact. Going basically through there. Around their property is going to be significant.
It could, it could.
And not necessarily in a good way.
I I think it's also important to understand what what kind of property owner you have. The 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 ownership group has owned this this outlet center for. About about six years now, it's it's been through four different ownerships since it was first built. The current ownership groups. While it's not, it is a New York based company, they own hundreds of assets around the country. And while they do development of their own in some places, the large chunk of their portfolio, including this this center. They are asset managers, they are not necessarily developers. They will make tangible improvements to the site they own, but they are not looking to significantly overhaul. Something that at least in their minds into their investment pools has a guaranteed return on investment. So when you when you have a prospect of potentially. Having a direct access point that knocks out one to three tenants in their space. That's a scary proposition for them.
Yeah.
So they have also a consideration to make the traffic, the uptick in traffic possibility, which definitely exists. Versus maybe the presumption that development to the east of them can work. They might be tied better. But we've also heard from them that the geometry of their site, if I'm a commercial developer and I'm interested in making sure my tenants stay in my development. The so called fortress style, which is that's actually the name of the style of outlet mall development keeps people in my center. And if I open another hole. And there may be additional commercial opportunity, those are potential lost customers, so that's also factors into their equation as well. So it's one of those dances that you have to have with these adjacent owners. There are no dummies, even though they're in New York, they know what they're doing and 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 they are very engaged and knowledgeable about this property and its surroundings, so. I'm not making them out to be evil, they've been actually very good to work with so far. We are just on different ends on how we would like to see. This overall area potentially work out.
And it's tough for them because they bought it and invested thinking it was going to be X. Now we're going to him saying, hey, what do you think about Y?
Well, and and that's the the hard point because previous ownership was at least open to the idea. To the point where at almost twelve years ago, the city had security option to buy. A direct access through and that fell through. That was also in the depths of the recession. So I don't fault anybody for making the decision during that time that was very difficult, but that's part of the equation you have and that. The the willingness to participate early on right now in a direct access that that ship has sailed.
The disclaimer under the photograph kind of waters down. Anything that you're doing, I think.
We're talking about this one here?
Yeah, because isn't the U R A going to amend and adopt this document?
Presumably.
Okay. I'm just curious why we need that.
I think there was a concern that. Development should not presume that the hypothetical access is a given. I think generally the caution that we've been as a staff have been trying to throw out there to development is you have existing access you can work with. We can show you what a hypothetical access could be and how it can line up with this outcome. But that'll be probably a critical point and honestly, that's going to have to be where either you folks or council. Tell us what you're comfortable with. Because staff didn't have that level of comfort to say otherwise. Because here's the thing, it doesn't exist right now.
No, I know, but it is potential. All you're saying is, hey, this is a possibility, or at least that's how I take it.
Right. And and that's kind of what we were saying here in the second paragraph is that. You may not have that access now, you may not have it within the first couple of years of your development pro forma. But you should absolutely plan that you could have it or that you might be able to achieve it. At some point, you should plan to potentially have it, that's what we're trying to say. So if that. Results in a better caption, then we can. Adjust the caption.
Yeah, I I just think it's kind of like you're kind of saying, hey, this is what we're thinking, but we're really not. Supporting it is kind of how I read it.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I. I I I tend to agree with Chris. In the the my image of this document document, it is. It is a really a guideline for a programmatic document. And so I think by being a programmatic document, it does not have to go through the test of semantics, syntax, analysis. And it can all it can also allows itself the latitude to be somewhat ambiguous. It is a programmatic document, we don't know what's going to happen and that the nature of this document. We can only make open windows and make assumptions there. But 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 nothing is etched in stone, so I I don't mind his approach a little more ambiguous. If if it is ambiguous, and I and I think and I think it reaches to try to be too specific will be. Potentially precludes possibility of development later on, which is what we want to do and that's why. I think my point that I always bring in in this kind of conversation is. The the less specific we are in our wording, the more opportunity to open ourselves because we don't want people to create an image in their mind about future development. So that that was the statement for me. One more, if I may, going back. Chris, if you may, just scroll back at the beginning, my apologies, I wanted to go through the entire document to understand where. When you were talking about at the beginning of the document, all those. Potential necessary relationship, you're talking about public private partnership. Was one of the element, I think you had at least five or six.
Do you recall what page, Mr. Money?
You know, we're talking about about six or seven bullets necessary for for.
Thank you, yeah, here we go.
Yes, quality, exactly, thank you very much. I wonder if, and again, I I'm not familiar with the rest of the organization, but I wonder if. Financial strategies like taxicliming financing for urban renewal will be something that could be. Inserted here because if the city really does own the land, then. Triggers and financial strategies like taxicliming finance, the urban renewal, of course, as we know everybody does. Could jumpstart, could work on incentive for economic development investment. If we already have done our homework, if we already have relationship with the private sector. So again, it doesn't have to be too specific, I I really truly believe in what I said before, it is a programmatic document, it's a guideline to a programmatic document. But the city has really this bargain chip, which is very, very important in this development. In this kind of development, I I like what you show from South Carolina. Without going to South Carolina or North Carolina, we can go to Caldwell Idaho, a city of sixty thousand. That in between two thousand and two, two thousand and ten has done an incredible downtown. I was the director of community and economic development there with Dave Leland of Portland. It was a twelve block, it's a grid like this, so we don't have to go that far. And and while he's already the specific, the architecture. There are examples much closer to us where we could really. Take benefit from it. The other thing also about. You can leave it if you might want to, the conversation about direct vehicular connection. Again, my apologies, I I tend to perpetuate the the past year, but. I. By saying a vehicular connection to me, we could be so specific because immediately is human nature, you excludes, you really. The standard is exclusion, there might be a pedestrian pedestrian connection, so a direct connection to me. Open the mind, it it could be anything, because again, we are a programmatic document. Once and if we really go start to go down a district plan, then yes, we have to be very specific, but at this point. We always meant to say that there has to be, and I think there is a tremendous asset to have a direct access, direct connection with the downtown. Vehicle are, of course, is important, so is pedestrian, I think, because we're going to start to go like example architectural urban design. Where the pedestrian bridges even over even over or or an overpass of eight lines highway. Start to match the contest of the urban fabric that they connect, you don't feel like you go over eight 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 lanes highway, so. But we don't want to go too specific right now, I think it will be. Counterproductive, so but that's by two by two sets.
So you're saying not to. Call out a vehicular access?
I I will say, you know, if you want, again, I I don't think there is a wrong way to do it or not. If you really want to leave it directly equal a connection. I just want the one to think that the equal connection is all we think about it, we might also think about pedestrian connection. That is flagged flagged by by an equal. Similar urban fabric as the two parts that connect, so vehicular might be interpreted like just vehicular, I don't need pedestrian. And to me at this point is open the window as much as possible, create this image of future development, create this visual, it can be understood in different way. We want a direct connection with downtown and I think that should be clear stated because doing otherwise would be missing a tremendous opportunity. Anyway, you sell it, that's. If you want to be a vehicle or live in the vehicle, it's fine.
You'd have to have, yeah, something would have to be vehicular.
But but yes, but a direct connection can mean everything, can be vehicular, can be pedestrian, can be bike, can be metro, can be anything. That's why I say at this point, if you just say vehicular, people start potentially and but usually that's what we are presented with. Excludes other one and they focus on vehicular. And I'm saying, don't 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 narrow yourself on vehicular, but if you want to leave it, use live it vehicular. And I'm saying, don't 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 narrow yourself on vehicular, but if you want to leave it, use live it vehicular is very fine. Again. We are at the guidelines of a programmatic document. You don't have to be specific. So it's fine.
Okay. Um, anybody else?
Uh, Chair Staffenson?
Okay, Mister Allen.
I would think that the more desirable a proposed development is. The more willing the city and possibly other agencies would be to put money into the hypothetical access. Or other parts of the development.
Okay.
There.
Yes.
Now, I would say, you know, I understand where Mister Ramoni's trip coming from as far as keeping the hypothetical access. Very ambiguous. But I also understand if I'm hearing you correctly is. How do we say that the city is supporting the hypothetical access? We want to go that direction. That is where we want to take it, but. Um, but we just don't know where it's going to go, but that is where we all would like to see it go, right? Right. Is is how do we? How do? How do we say we are? We're all supporting it. We all want it, but we just don't know where it's going to go, right?
Right.
I think it's that, yeah, it's how do we word that? I think we need to rewrite that caption though.
Yeah, and I guess, you know, my. You know, if we look at this and we say, okay, this is what we're thinking. And then underneath it, we're saying, hey, this isn't endorsed. And that's why we have to rewrite that caption because we're kind of talking out of both sides of our mouth at that point.
I would agree.
Okay.
Yeah. Then if you go back up, Chris, to the uh. Get right there and then uh just talking on the uh. The consistent and specific architectural style should be established. That just seems extremely generic of what that style is going to be, whether it's going to be a small town feel, whether it's going to be. You know, um. I I don't know, it just seems extremely generic. I if we want to leave it generic, great. We want to be a little more specific. I don't know. It just. Bugs me where that is going to go.
So the question.
Know. Okay.
Go ahead, Mister Whitman. I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, I I I just, I I don't know. It's just, it's kind of screaming and beacon at me that. It's just so generic that I I just don't know where it's going to go or where that that sentence is going to go because. It it could go sideways on a lot of us that um. How that architectural style, who is going to make that decision of? You know, is it going to be us? Is it? Is it not? Is it? I don't know.
So can I can I?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ultimately, a development is going to be reviewed by the Town Center Advisory Committee. And then the Planning Commission. Assume.
Presumably.
And then the Urban Renewal Board. So I would think that would be the the hoops that someone would go through.
This is an important question that he's bringing up, though, Mister Chair, because I think. That that there's generally two schools of thought about it, and it was left a little bit ambiguous intentionally because there wasn't a clear solution at the time. But this is probably the time you want to start having some answers to the question. I guess the first question. That you folks can chew on somewhat related is, do you want this architectural design? In the confluence to mimic? What you already have in downtown, meaning it's going to be different in scale because it's going to be bigger, but do you? Are you looking for a more classic style architecture? Or might you be more comfortable with something more contemporary? And by contemporary, I mean something more along the lines of, say, the townhomes that were built at Discovery Block. Not necessarily the 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 lodge building at the corner, but that is a clear contemporary design, or if you see some of the. Four over one or five over one architecture you see in certain other areas of the region where it is a far more contemporary design. Uh, than say a early twentieth century inspired palette. I think that's the first critical question. What does this commission think? Because this is probably some of the things that the the council's going to need your help in 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 hearing that.
Chris, uh, Mister Chair, if I may, um. I I believe that it would be on our advantage. Again, not to be specific at this point, the last thing we want to do by already establish a track, a very clear track is stifle the creativity of urbanists and planners. They can reach the solution, the final vision of what we have in intent in different, different ways. And so my concern. Is that my experience with these documents is that if you become too specific. You scare people from 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 applying, you scare creativity, uh, otherwise you give them really a a program, uh, um. Prescriptive document and and that's none of us want to do without this point. I think we are very clear in our mind what the feeling should be. Uh, even even though, you know, small, small village feeling is is very is very. Um, vague, but but in the end, once we see it, we know. And to me, to go specific at this level is really stifled creativity of planner architect because they can really. Be very creative, create a su- a a solution that is extremely successful and then meet the intent and then vision. Of the community and the council and the planning commission and so on and so forth. So that would be my 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 approach. Be prudent, be cautious about writing too much at this point. We have a like like the chair suggested, we have a process. We have a program that's going to be scrutinized very many times this development. Uh, to be too specific right now, I think will be counter counterproductive.
That was kind of the concern that the Town Center Committee had too, was that if if you try to. Hinge it on one, you might be winnowing the pool of potential soliciting partners. And and the the idea of of having maybe one, this district, this area being distinct from downtown. I mean, it's clearly geographically separated by the railroad track. So you could do it comfortably, but I don't think there was general consensus from the Town Center Committee when they were reviewing this. About whether they should or not. It was more of a wait and see approach, which is, I think, why it was left ambiguous at this point.
Right. And so a consistent and specific architectural style should be established. What in collaboration? I don't know.
Well, again, I think.
I think you need to call something out. It's just saying, hey, there is an expectation.
Can can we go to the section just because that 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 might expand upon it a little bit more here? This is what what staff came as a draft writing here, basically.
I just spell it out pretty good.
Commissioner Whitman, does that answer your question?
I believe so. It does follow it up pretty good. I I there's a little bit of meat here to. Move forward.
Mister Chair.
Oh, Commissioner Priggy.
I do, I I like the way it's written. And I do agree with Commissioner Ramoni that to be too restrictive will is will pigeonhole us into a design that. We may not be able to and in the future. Now, this is future document, so. The future may change, and so if we we make it too restrictive as far as design goes. Uh. We're kind of holding it back kind of because you don't know what the future is going to hold as far as design. And architecture in the future.
But we've kind of what we're saying here is trapped it will commit itself to working with a developer and their design professionals. To come up with something that works.
Yeah, that would work.
And I mean, we're not saying, okay, you have to use these materials. You have to, you know, we're not going to to that extent, which I think is positive.
Like if if you were in Leavenworth, Washington, for instance, if you had a site like this, I mean, their their whole shtick is the whole Bavarian Alpine theme thing. You're going to want to make sure that half timbered houses are part of the design palette. I mean. While you have some beautiful architecture in this community, you don't have a template. Of that rigor that you want to make sure it gets preserved or enforced. At least that's what we've heard from the community. So better to keep it a little bit open, but commit to a expectation of consistency. With whatever the solution might be.
Yeah, you're going to have to come up with something and we're going to work with you is kind of how I read that.
Uh, Chris, it seems to me that, uh, and. That what you have right now, as I and I I meant what I said before, this is a guideline for a programmatic document. I prefer not to go through the exercise of fixing semantic and syntax, but if I were a benevolent dictator, I could eliminate the first. Um, paragraph in in both involve, um, the first two lines of both paragraphs, that while the first one. Uh, is fine with me, very very fine. Uh, that says them, the confluence side is distinct enough in geographic boundary and physical separation. The mimicking of the early twentieth century architecture of a Nakota downtown or the Osterfront is not required is is very fine. I think it's fine. The second paragraph, maybe to me, it's again, I don't, and this obviously is personal preference. Um, as a result of mixing competing architectural styles of the presumption or standard corporate style architecture for commercial tactics to be discouraged. I I think I know what you have in mind. I think all of us, we're already in mind. We we don't want a McDonald out there or a, you know, or a pizza or, you know, whatever, but. Corporate style could be also misunderstood a little bit with the image that you're just above. So. While I'm fine with everything is there, if I were a benevolent dictator, maybe tweak this corporate style. Again, I don't want to stifle anybody. From be creative and we are going to be confronted potentially with company that have done a lot of very successful. Design and very successful development by working along those 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 lines. So. But again, if you leave, if you had to leave it this way right now, I will be fine. Uh, because as I said before, it is a programmatic document.
Um, okay, and so that's something I was thinking, what about deleting that first sentence? That's the one that uh hits me the hardest. What?
No, no, just. I I think part of the the only pushback staff would have is maybe that first part on the competing architectural styles because I I recall that being a problem. They they there was at least a a desire. To ensure that development or or design choice was intentional and that it wouldn't clash. I I I would, I'm not going to lose sleep if we want to remove the corporate style architecture. I think to your point, Mister Ramoni, that was to prevent the. Company specific architectural like a Pizza Hut roof. Or even in some case, honestly, even in something like, you know, you are the gateway to the gorge. Let's say you had a hotel developer, right? You know, a Hilton or a Holiday Inn or whatever, they have a specific template that they use. It's a typical architectural template. Is that an appropriate marker for the very first or the very last hotel you see on your way in and out of the gorge? Or do you want something that blends in more specific? What we heard was there might be a desire that there should be some specificity to that, not to change their floor plan. But just to have an expectation that maybe it looks more gorge-like. Yes. That that's that's why we we put the sentence in, but at the end, this is a community document, so we really don't.
Chris, if if you had to leave it this way, I would be fine. I again, I I think I understood and you've made confirmation of what your intent was, and so I can understand and appreciate in you. In your shoes that you want to create, you know, what a bungee jump without a rope and a net. So. Uh, I just don't want to confuse even more and maybe block even more creativity, but. We all, we all understand, I think all of us used to be extremely naive not to understand that the corporal style is exactly what they describe. A pizza roof or or something, you know, that is not something we will feed there. So either way, again, at this point. Once we were going to create a specific, if we are going to create a specific design code, then I think we have to really go through a conversation at this point. Uh, I don't think there is a wrong assumption unless there is really something outstanding, which I have no personally have no notice. I'm very fine with the document for what it's supposed to bring out.
It limits you too much if that one came out.
It could. It could.
It could.
What? It limits you what? I'm sorry.
It would limit you if it came out or it could come out.
No, I don't think it limits us if it came out.
Okay. Anybody else for delete the first sentence? I got enough.
Well, we can just line it out and you can read it without it.
You guys okay with that? Okay, I saw a head nod. That's all I need to want. Okay.
All right.
Next up.
Uh, we jumped a little bit further down in the document, so we were on this page. Was there any other item? Um, I know you want to rewrite this, but were there other items you wanted to consider before rewriting?
Uh, go down a little further. See, I think we're okay.
Okay, next page.
Yeah. That's before my time.
The the fun fun fact about that plan, there are instructions about applying two coats of lead paint on site.
Lead paint. Woo hoo.
One thing that a a unnamed developer who who walked the site with us recently mentioned was the concern about a fall zone for the tower, that it might limit. Some area immediately around it from being developed and that it might be somewhat inconveniently placed and whether or not there would be an appetite. To sure, keep the tower, but perhaps relocate it, um, which had not come up previously. So that's why that third paragraph kind of got inserted. Um, just for clarifications.
I know you want to be. Open, but boy, I don't know that anybody could afford it.
Yeah, and.
Okay. Do we need this originally painted in silver lead paint has deteriorated over time due to rusty graffiti?
You don't have to.
Can we not? Can we say the structure remains a solidly built structure that could play an important role in branding?
Sure.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
You don't want us to spill all our secrets?
Yes.
I'd like him to have to look at the graffiti first. So a fall zone may need to be. ought to be considered. Do we need to do that?
Only of of the fifteen or so people who have engaged on this property. Only one person has ever brought it up. Everyone else apparently believes they can work with it in its placement or not, uh, and they mentioned the fall zone, but we've never had a structural engineer come out to look at and say. Well, in the event of a seven oh earthquake, it will fall or it will fall in such a fashion. So I mean, that could be something that could be studied.
So three could be gone. Paragraph.
That's, I mean, it's it's more than just the fall zone. I mean, is it as important that the tower remain in place? Where it is or that it's just kept? Can can the tower be moved strategically if that's what what it takes to make a preferred development outcome?
So so could that be done with the city is open to discussions if there's a need to relocate the tower to accommodate development?
So just remove the first sentence?
Yeah, and I don't even know that you need the last, the last part of it. I'm just saying, could you just stop with the city is open to discussions if there's a need to relocate the tower to accommodate development? Period.
Sure. Um, does there need to be more descriptive by saying, sure, you can relocate the tower, but we're not paying for it? We the taxpayers are not paying for it? I they I this gets down to a community value judgment.
Yeah, so. If you're a big developer, you can consider moving the tower. So do you want to say that that?
If you're a big developer.
No.
If you're a medium developer, we'll work with you.
Yeah, we'll work with you.
was the concern about a fall zone for the tower, that it might limit some area immediately around it from being developed and that it might be somewhat inconveniently placed. And whether or not there would be an appetite to sure, keep the tower, but perhaps relocate it. Which had not come up previously. So that's why that third paragraph kind of got inserted. Just for clarifications.
I know you wanna be open, but boy, I don't know that anybody could afford it.
Yeah, and.
Okay. Do we need this originally painted and silver lead paint has deteriorated over time due to rusted graffiti?
You don't have to.
Can we not, can we say the structure remains a solidly built structure that could play an important role in branding?
Sure.
Okay. You guys okay with that?
You don't want us to spill all our secrets?
Yes.
Like I'm just have to look at the graffiti first. So a falls zone may need to be ought to be considered? Do we need to do that?
Only of, of the fifteen or so people who have engaged on this property, only one person has ever brought it up. Everyone else apparently believes they can work with it in its placement or not. Uh, and they mentioned the fall zone, but we've never had a structural engineer come out to look at it and say, well, in the event of a seven oh earthquake, it will fall or it will fall in such a fashion. So, I mean, that could be something that could be studied.
So three could be gone? Paragraph?
That's, I mean, it's, it's more than just the fall zone. I mean, is it as important that the tower remain in place where it is? Or that it's just kept? Can, can the tower be moved strategically if that's what, what it takes to make a preferred development outcome?
So, so could that be done with the city is open to discussions if there's a need to relocate the tower to accommodate development?
So just remove the first sentence?
Yeah, and I don't even know that you need the last, the last part of it. I'm just saying, could you just stop with the city is open to discussions if there's a need to relocate the tower to accommodate development? Period.
Sure. Um, does there need to be more descriptive by saying, sure, you can relocate the tower, but we're not paying for it? We, the taxpayers are not paying for it? I, they, this gets down to a community value judgment.
Yeah, so if you're a big developer, you can consider moving the tower. So do you wanna say that, that?
If you're a big developer. If you're a medium developer, we'll work with you.
Yeah, we'll work with you. Okay, however you think you wanna work that.
But do you have a particular proposal?
Open to discussions if the developer feels they need to go to the effort to relocate the tower to accommodate development.
Yeah, we just put the last part of the sentence on there. Just go uh, open to discussion if there is the need to relocate the tower to accommodate development, comma, and find a creative means to incorporate it within the, within the development pattern if possible.
Okay. And do we need the fall zone statement?
No.
Okay.
And get rid, yeah, get rid of the first sentence.
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
Sure, okay. Don't be so agreeable in here.
It is eight thirty.
All right. Onward.
These are just image graphics that are accompanying the next discussion item. Tough. So this one was just a longer description about it, but this is what we had talked about. And again, this is the specific, this is the access. Uh, this is talking about interaction with the property under to the west, less so about the access from downtown. Um, this, this section here.
Okay.
So this kinda ties into the desire to maybe rewrite that caption on that first graphic. And, and I think Mr. Wittrun was basically asked like, appointing, like, how do we communicate that this is a preference? Well, I think a preferred outcome, yeah.
Yeah.
So the question is, is this sufficient enough? Cause this is really where we would say that.
Probably.
Getting off here, getting on a shuttle to Molnoma Falls, or how many are actually gonna go eat at, at, um, at Pompeo's? Right.
Mr. Chair, you have to chair. You also have to think about the minimums with their, um, people are using like off-street parking in neighborhoods and other places that are gonna be available at some point. So when they have a, uh, community event or a concert that, and they have parking and they could shuttle from there, that would work too.
That's a good point. Yeah. I do think it's an expense, but I also think it's an opportunity. If it's done right.
Well, and, and you folks did two weeks ago, remember in your capital improvement plan comments did forward the recommendation that a parking structure be considered as a future capital project. So
Right.
You've had comfort level with the idea. The question, I guess now for you and advising the, the, the U R A board, i.e. the council, is, is this a must-have or would like to have or somewhere in between?
Commission?
I would say it's somewhere close to a must-have. Also a must-have, it can be, but not a must-have.
Anyone else?
I agree with Mr. Uh, Mr. Whit, Whit and Wittrun, sorry. Um, that it, it's close as much, as close as you're gonna get to a must-have.
It's, uh, desirable.
Okay. Well, I always agree with Commissioner Wittrun. Okay, so.
We know that's not all true.
Carving?
We know that's not always true.
I, I think it's it's close to a must.
Okay, so does the existing language drafted need to be beefed up to articulate that?
Let's see what we got here, guys.
I think there should be a little bit stronger wording. When we called it out in the beginning of the, the document as well, so.
Could you say is needed?
Um, where would you say that?
In the bullets?
Oh, you mean up here in bold, basically. So beyond the
A centralized parking facility garage should be considered. I'm saying, would you go as far as saying is needed?
If you're gonna say that, may, I ask that we, because that, that will scare some people off unless you correlate that and then explain within a title why you need it.
I, I agree with Chris. If you, if you go to that specific language, you have to bring proof. You have to have a traffic study, you have to have an analysis because, and on top of that, which is a technicality. So it's just a technicality. I, I again, I suggest we are less demanding in our language. We have a process by which we can be very demanding. Once a designer arrive, it's gonna be scrutinized. Up and down, left and right, at any point, if we don't agree, we just say so. And so I always suggest, as I always, be prudent with caution, with conservative in your language on a programmatic document. This is not a code. This is not a design code for the downtown area or for the, this area. This is a programmatic document. If we start to be too specific and too demanding, is actually you change the nature of the programmatic document, which, which is really almost a marketing tool to advertise the site for development. And no one would do a programmatic document imposing guidelines and tracks of limited. But, you know, if the majority of the commissioner think that is, it's going, we're gonna vote their way, but I don't, I don't see value in it. Actually, my original comment, even though again, I'm fine, I stick to what I, I stick to what I said before. I'm not gonna go through a syntax or semantic analysis was to, ah, it's too direct, it's too demanding, but I, you know. So I find the way it is almost borderline.
Well, and I, I was gonna say.
Some discomfort.
I know. It's, it's tough because you don't wanna be too restrictive, but we have heard for years about parking.
But Mr.
The importance of it.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna continue to hear about parking even if you get the structure.
I know that. But on top of that, Mr. Chair, and I agree with you. I think we, we tend to agree. I think substantially we agree. We believe and we, we almost have a sense that the parking and parkings, the parking structure, parking are necessary. And so that does not prevent us from, once we have desire, once we start to have connection with groups that want to be part of this development, to state so. But to do that at the beginning, I, I, I don't know if it's necessarily an advantage. That's my point. I think we all to agree on the commission that there is need for parking and the parking facility will be a tremendous benefit. Because we really could, it, it could create a, become a magnet for all the parking that happened around, around the river and around the facility, around all the street that could congregate there and create really a, a magnet. But, but I don't know if it is strategically, if it's worth it enough to impose in such a language. Uh, but, but then maybe it's just a subtle difference before that fundamental, we agree with it. The parking a facility will be wonderful to have.
I do like the desired instead of needed. That looks good.
Yeah, that language.
I like that language.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody okay? If I don't have something in there about parking, I'm gonna get shot.
This section we, was already covered. Was there another?
We kind of beat that up. I think we could go on. Well, somebody has anything else with that page.
So this kind of you already took care of. Uh, this, this was the the zoning change you made where you did allow for the increase in the heights. So. Whether you still need to keep it in the framework plan or not, it's actually, you could take it out, but this just reminds everybody. Why we're comfortable with taller buildings.
Yeah, I I think you're probably good putting it in there because it's pretty controversial. Or was or is.
It's different for sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. And then the last one, which, um, when we made it an initial presentation to council about what would be in the framework plan. And we did highlight to the council. Of those those criteria, there was a questioner. A comment made about, um, was it homeownership opportunities that we are prioritizing or higher end? Housing that we are prioritizing. So I guess maybe that becomes somewhat of a values judgment that I would be curious to see how the council. How how this commission feels. You know, your housing needs analysis suggests. You have a deficiency in in upper income housing. We also know that there have been some on committees and on council that have stressed the importance of homeownership opportunities. So before I turn it over to you, here's kind of staff viewpoint as of twenty twenty-two. When we have relayed that general desire to the development community that's at least starting to study and and per- percolating interest. The the feedback we receive is this. The condo market. Which, if you're assuming higher density and homeownership opportunity, the condo market in this state has effectively cratered. Because of construction defect law, very few people, very few developers are willing to develop condominiums. At this point, until there might be a legislative fix that can reduce the period of time that. Developers or their subsidiaries can be sued. For any defects to condo development. It's a big problem and it has stunted the growth of condo development. So as a result, what developers are doing instead, when you're considering. Say four to seven-story residential development is they're largely doing apartments, but very upscale, upper-end apartments. Where you have rents anywhere from eighteen hundred to thirty-two hundred dollars a month, which fits in very well. With your needed housing supply. Based on, based on the the, what it takes, what type of income it takes to rent at that type of standard. So. So what what the development crew is basically saying is. The development world, I should say, not the crew. Um, they're saying, we can accommodate your high-end housing, but we see it as a rental market solution, not an ownership. And if you truly desire ownership, then you should expect to see a lot more proposals that will. Uh, have townhome development, because that is a market and we've witnessed it here. Townhome development has actually been very popular. Does not come with the same constraints. Now, townhome development is great. However, it comes at considerably less density, which some people are fine with. But it also suggests too, then your return on investment for a developer might be that much more limited. So. It's likely that a developer would come hand in hand with a mixture of townhome development, but would still need. An apartment building of sorts to at least ensure a return on investment for a larger development proposal. So I guess it comes down to a values judgment, knowing that that's kind of the current lay of the land, what the market is suggesting. What does this community, what does this planning commission think? Is it more important to have higher-end housing? Or more important to have homeownership opportunities? You can have both, but understand you're going to be making concessions one way or the other.
Okay. So. You know, our friends in Salem should be able to fix any, any law, right, that we have a problem with.
Well, to be clear, joke aside, I mean, there will be a couple of developers who will say they could do condos, but. The market is quite, quite limited at that. So I don't want to say nobody will do it, but. You don't want to be so narrowly focused where you, because you could really, really thin out that pool.
No, I I understand that. So I guess my question then is, um, I would say that you do condor townhouses.
So you still place a a a high priority on homeownership opportunities, the way that. The way we have adopted in the town center.
I I know the town center committee did.
Yeah.
That was a very strong thing for them. And I think that would honor that and hopefully a developer could make that work. I think if you, if you lay out apartments, then you're going to get apartments. Because that's more profitable. And I know they were really big on homeownership. But I don't know if it pencils, and I guess that's probably not our job, I guess.
But if it doesn't pencil, then they will almost certainly suggest that. In the face of maybe not having the direct access established, they know they can make apartments work. The apartments don't necessarily require that direct access like a commercial project would. You know, does that spoil the party basically? Because, yeah, you might be able to get, say, I don't know, forty to eighty to a hundred and twenty townhomes on that site. But it may have to come with a hundred and twenty apartments too, to make this thing work.
Right.
So again, what's what's the toleration there? What are we more animated by as a community?
I'll jump in with my instincts and my two senses. Homeownership is is the priority and. You know, we we have to come to to the table with that and support our community with homeownership and and try to open those doors first. And see if it does pencil out, see if we can make it work. If it doesn't work and it can't work. Then we go back to the table and we go back to the drawing board and we and we try to find a balance of what can work. But first and foremost, we got to stick with the. With the community and try to find, try and try to find that homeownership for for Troutdale. That's my thoughts.
Mister Chair, I share Mister Commissioner Wittrick's statement and sentiment. I think that. If decide, as you already said, so it is so important for us. If it is a lifetime opportunity. Then as a city, we should have the prerogative to say, no, this is no good enough. We have other vision, we have other priority. And so that's why I've said before, in the end, we have the ability to scrutinize left and right, upside down, inside out, this this. But the goal and the vision should be, uh, difficult to change unless there really is impossible. But I I agree with the. Commissioner Wittrick's statement. Yes, the vision should be what we have and we'd be able to say, no, this is no good enough. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Commissioner Stephenson?
Uh, Commissioner Allen.
Uh, sorry, Chair Stephenson, correct me. So, um, I believe that homeownership is key to long-term financial stability of a family. I think all too often we consider, uh, affordable housing. Has to relate to substandard housing. And what we end up with is people paying more for less. When the price of housing has a lot more to do with. Um, availability, vacancy rates than anything else. And if we can, uh, build some housing in this area, uh, whether it be up end. Uh, that would be fine as well, because it takes some of the pressure off. Uh, on the, uh, availability of housing.
Okay.
Are you, are you folks comfortable with the statement the way it is in?
What's an upwardly mobile household?
It's, it's basically the.
I think of that as a tiny home.
Um, yeah, that might be just too much of an industry term. Basically, kind of, kind of young professionals, uh, that are. May have rented for a time period and are looking to. Establish roots and frankly, establish equity in in a home acquisition that are. Frankly, currently priced out of the market. Because there's nothing for them in this community right now.
Okay. So can we tweak that?
Sure. Younger professionals?
Yes. Seeking their first home owning investment.
Sure.
May forget that we want to buy. This kicking tires.
Chris, is there a way to flop those? Paragraphs a little bit, so we talk about homeownership first. And then talk about. The the housing, um. Higher income housing second, just so we're prioritizing homeownership before. Higher income housing.
Last paragraph.
Dicky tacky, but it's just. When you read it in order, it just makes it sound like it's more, you know, that one's more important than the other. Barry, you had a comment?
So I'm sorry, would would that mean then that the second paragraph drops to the third? And then the the first, the the bottom paragraph goes second or third or?
Yeah, just just, yeah, flopping those two, second to third, second to.
Sure.
You'd have to frame it just a little bit differently.
Yeah, you'd have to just get rid of furthermore and.
Yeah, just.
Reword a little bit, but just prioritizing the homeownership piece first.
Yeah.
Sure, we can, we can wordsmith that if that's all right with you.
That work?
Yep.
Does that work for everybody?
Okay.
Chris, um, I'm I'm fine. Again, fundamentally, in the end, would would the majority decide I'm I'm fine. But I I I truly believe going back before, not to be too specific. To me, sometimes less is more. The the last paragraph, the one you just crossover in red. I would like to see it if it were me. Furthermore, the HNA also spoke to providing additional ownership opportunities. For. Particularly for people with their, are to their first home money investment. That covered the entire spectrum. I, to go too specific is to. Assume a program like we said before, we don't want to go in that direction. At least I think we should not want to go in that direction. If 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 the majority of the commissioner think we should go, then we're going to go there. But to me again, less is more. Furthermore, the HNA also spoke to provide additional ownership opportunities for people on their first money investment. Covers everything, professional, single, anything you want. Why say too much? And potentially prevent from other group to be involved into it. So I think in this situation. There is value in lessons more, but again, in the end, whatever you decide is fine.
I I'm just wondering if what they were trying to do was capture the fact that you've got some people that are downsizing from a larger home. And maybe they have a larger home and some property and they'd like to have something along the river. That doesn't have a yard that they have to take care of and and cows they have to feed and things of that nature.
Uh, Mister Chair, that could be an op, that could be a possibility. Of course it could be, uh, but also there are other twenty possibility. And I don't think we should be there listing them all, also because we probably will be missing around fifteen. So. Uh, it's possible that the people that are empty nester are going to decide, but once the market, uh. And once the developing is is created and there are opportunities, people of different backgrounds, of different heritage, of different. Uh, social situation are going to decide if it's worth their investment or not. But to make it specific now, we will be missing a potential about a program of people that might be interested, ever no listed. So. Again, this is personal, this is individual, less is more in this situation.
But all he's doing is he's talking about the HNA. The study talked about these people were there.
Again, I.
We're just referencing the study.
I I understand, but the the study is a study, create a programmatic document, a different thing. So we, and also by by not. By by still referencing the study and by saying people, their first home money of investment. You include every people that you said and probably be in close to include people that you don't think you're including. So I don't see the value in adding, be specific in this language. But again, I am one person. If the rest of the commission liked it. That's fine. We go along your file and we do the document. Again, is is a programmatic document.
Okay.
Is is the edit that's on the screen right now sufficient? Basically, rather than trying to call it young professional or upwardly mobile, just people who are seeking their first home owning investment, but. Leaving the empty nester in place, because that was a critical element that. The 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 study suggested was frankly. One of the the issues why we had an oversupply. Or an undersupply rather of of the high housing, because people.
Have that market.
People want to re- remain in Troutdale, but there's nothing for them of a quality or an expectation to downsize them too.
Okay.
That's why we wrote it the way we did.
Okay. Anybody?
Almost there. Last page was the flexibility page.
Here we go. Flexibility. Do you need to capitalize urban renewal district?
Yeah, it should be urban renewal area or 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 really, yeah, we'll fix that. Just messing with this.
Okay. You guys have any comments? I I think it's pretty well written, actually.
Okay.
All right.
Would agree.
Is there anything missing from this document?
I'm sure there is. I don't know what it is.
I guess maybe the better question was, did the commission in reviewing the document expect to see something in the document that wasn't in there?
I don't know.
And we don't really have a.
Do you guys need to see a clean version of this now?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. Okay. Hang on a second. You want one? Somebody said, or you're good too. Okay, you guys are all good. Okay. Did you want to?
Yes, please.
Make a comment, Miss Public? You didn't say, oh, no.
Who did say, oh, no? That's the rich album. Okay, Diane Castillo White again. Okay, um, the tower concerning the tower. I think you're going to get a lot of pushback if that's a, um, an option.
To move it?
Yeah, because it's historic. Um, there's many residents and businesses with that view.
Yeah.
Okay, and also from the Sandy River Bridge, you see the tower. What, once you move something that's iconic and just. You know, like a family member, it's it's, you're going to need to give notice to everybody that that may. Possibly affect visually. Okay, so I'm just saying, um, I mean, it's really cool, it's valued. There's a lot of historic pictures of it, so I I'm, you know, I'm just thinking that's not a good idea. And. Okay, um, when you talk about, you're talking about the structure. I like how you're talking about kind of one, one type. But the other things that are added like outside and such, it would be nice if it honored the Sandy River Gorge. Or the Columbia River Gorge in, um. If the art and the additional structures would mimic in some way the nature or existing nature. structures would mimic in some way the nature or existing nature and taking those two things into consideration. Uh, and that might not be for now, it might be for your next committee, but that's why people will want to live there and want to visit there. You know, so and also, you know, you're looking across at a native historical location. So if maybe that they would consider adding, you know, some of those elements that those would be the most complimentary to those who live in Troutdale as well that go along the waterfront and to those that may be attracted to that site. But that we, that is called the Sandy River Gorge as well. So it's a Sandy River Gorge, the, uh, the Columbia Gorge, uh, Mount Hood, uh, the stork, uh, rotten bluff and such. So those, those things that would complement that. So then they might think, oh, add some big rocks, you know, whatever that looks like. Okay, um, and
So we really have the confluence of the Columbia River Gorge and Sandy River.
Right, right. And, and yeah, things that enhance that and celebrate that in, in, you know, and historically note that. The parking structure and, and I understand there's not a need at this time, but all the wonderful things that we're envisioning and wanting are including the, the new restaurant that may go in at the old, old city hall. Um, you know, and another thing we could think about is it's a paid structure. So that might pay for the help, pay for the structure itself and then the walking path or whatever it is to get there. That might be a consideration. The reason I'm saying pain as well to park there is because you might have some bike riders that want to bike to the Dells. They, they might want that as their destination point and it would be encouraged for them to be there and to pay for it rather than to oc, you know, occupy downtown area, which we're gonna have between the food carts and between that restaurant and they had burrito bill or whatever it's called, you know, and everything else that's going in, you know, so, um, you know, and plus any other any other home board and anything else that may go in that, that's adding residence, which includes the waterfront as well. So very soon it will change, but that the charging may be a way to help facilitate that and also as member of the town center committee, that was a very important element to connect the old town with, uh, with what happens down there. And, uh, uh, and also when we're talking about, um, selling condos and the difficulty of, of such a thing. The one thing we do have though, different than it's not any condo, it's a, uh, a beautiful scenic uh, gateway to the gorge waterfront, uh, non-obstructed, rotten bluff, mountain view condo. Uh, so those are some, some, hopefully some, um, some things that will entice them. If they were ever going to consider to purchase a condo, that that would be the location that they, they would want, they would want to do so. Uh, thank you for your time. It was a very good meeting. It was nice to sit down on this. It was very interesting. Thank you.
I was gonna say she brings up some good points. Maybe water tower on wheels or something.
Roll it in, roll it out, yeah. I don't think Sharon Nesbitt would go for that.
No. And, and I'm back on page two, right? Qualitative factors, things that we're considering, and I think these are important, you know, land ownership and partnership and if they're gonna invest in capital and infrastructure. I, I wonder, and this is probably just me, how important is art and cultural investments? Is it to picking a development partner?
Well, just like our public comment was stating there of, hey, we want to embrace the Sandy River Gorge and the Columbia River Gorge and having those those influences and how do we bring those in? But some of that could be art and cultural investments to bring those bring those in as well. It just depends how you read into it.
Yeah, see, I would say that conservation and preservation efforts of existing features would be that's how I would read that.
So just, just to clarify, page is basically saying what, what sort of things could go into a plan? You don't really, I mean, apart from the water tower and, and the, the, the architecture stuff kind of touches on it. You don't have anything that specifically calls out an expectation that public art or architectural design or whatever mimic or, or not mimic. Responds to the natural or cultural historic surroundings. You could do it. You can add a par, a paragraph or two, or you could finesse it within what you've got right now, but this is just kind of just a grab bag list as far as things that could go into it, but not, you don't have to embellish it on this page.
Yeah, I I don't know. I just wouldn't want somebody, a development to get picked because they're building a statue of a Twinkie or something that's gonna go on the front of it. You know?
Yeah. Um, if it was a Reese's cup, however, we might
Maybe.
Yeah.
That Chris probably being picky again, I would flop those two and put the arts and culture investment at the bottom and conservation, preservation up. Cause once again, everybody reads in priority order. How's that Danny? That help?
Yeah. It's all right. Okay. So it sounds like we're good with this as written now. Okay. And so, um, we would then make a motion.
You do need to close the hearing and then you can
Yeah.
make a motion as, uh, to adopt as amended.
Okay.
Or not so, to, to recommend, and it's to the Urban Renewal Agency Board, not the council.
I move that we
That we adopt the framework plan for the Confluence site as amended.
Commissioner Whitton, I think Commissioner Prickett had one in front of you.
I, I move that we, uh, close the public hearing.
And do I have a second for closing the hearing?
All second half.
Okay, have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Now um, entertain a motion to recommend the amended framework plan by the planning commission to the Urban Renewal Agency Board.
Someone can say, so moves.
If you're all right.
Chair, I'll make a, uh, make a motion to recommend the approval as amended for the framework plan for the Confluence site to the herbal, urban renewal agency.
Nice second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to recommend adoption of the framework plan as amended from the city council to the Urban Renewal Agency Board. We're recommending they adopt it. Okay. All right, that work? Any questions on the motion? No? Okay. Call them.
Commissioner Whitton?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mamone?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Chair Stephenson.
Yes. Okay, that passes five zip. Better than that, you could say it's unanimous.
Sounds better.
Okay. All right. Hey, a lot of hard work, you guys. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Nicely done.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving right along.
We'll keep it generally brief. Um, we, um, as, as mentioned two weeks ago, uh, there was some council action that was taken on a city property. Uh, last night, the old city hall, uh, did get an approval for a potential purchaser. Um, it is contingent upon planning commission approval, no pressure to you, um, but please, uh, while there's been a lot of media about the sale today and a lot of social media activity about the sale. Remember that you do have a conditional use hearing that will be in front of you, uh, effectively a month from now. Um, so four weeks from now, not your next meeting, but meeting thereafter. Uh, so please try to keep an objective point of view on, on that matter, uh, and it'll, it'll come before you before long. You will be instrumental and, and in it one way or the other.
And it will be a type three hearing.
It will be a type
And so you don't know, you don't, yeah, nothing, yeah, okay. Don't look at it, don't drive by it.
Well, that's a little hard to do, but, but don't, don't descend into the particulars if you don't mind. In your mailboxes, hopefully tomorrow, if not by Friday, you will have uh, a full on chapter three to look at. Uh, this will be in preparation for your next meeting where we will be talking about House School 2001 and our future text amendments. We're going to try to break it up as best we can. We will be focusing on chapter three, which is the zoning uh, district section. And then the subsequent meeting, uh, we will focus on chapter eight and the other chapters which are affected by this development code amendment. Um, so, uh, be on the lookout for that. It'll be a packet. Uh, we will include a comparator table to see where the references, you won't have a red line because it would be a lot of red ink. But you will have a restructured development code. It'll be highlighting what is required by law and what is, uh, suggested by staff.
So you got a new one.
You're gonna have a new one and you'll also have the original one to compare it to as well. And you'll have the comparator table to reference back and forth. That is the only topic of the agenda for next, uh, in, in two weeks' time. Please do
But in four weeks, in four weeks' time, we could have chapter eight and that type three hearing.
It will be. The, the type three hearing, while it is of course important, it is a pretty straightforward hearing and, um, I guess we'll, we'll have to be cerebral that evening to see how much energy or stamp. But well, it's, it's a pretty straightforward hearing. There wasn't a lot, let me put it this way, there wasn't a lot of public objection last night. But there's still plenty of time in a month for people to, to opine, so.
Somebody will get excited.
Um, beyond that, a lot of development activity. Alex has been really busy, I know. Um, and we also have some long-range planning items we're, we're tackling too. And, um, we're appreciative of this body's efforts and willingness to meet twice a month. It certainly helps get the work program through and, um, we appreciate your service to the city. One last note on service to the city. I believe we don't have anybody whose terms are expiring. This go around for planning commission is one of those random years where everybody gets to stay on for one more. At least, um, but, uh, it is getting close to a call for proposal for vacancies for the other cities, boards and commissions. So if you or others are interested in serving in other capacities, uh, be on the lookout for when those packets get out. Uh, interviews for the vacancies will be in May. Appointments in June and service starts now July one, not on January one. So, um, please help us get the word out. Lastly, um, the popular, uh, summer art walks, uh, that were the first Fridays of the month, they will be returning next year happily. Those, uh, will be kicking off in May and will run through September. So we're moving it up a month. And that's probably good enough for now, Mister Chair. Thank you, everybody.
All right. Well, let's go around, call a knee. Commissioner Mamone?
Uh, no comment, Mister Chair. Thank you very much for the evening. A good conversation. Thank you. And thank you to the staff, of course. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Prickett?
I have nothing, but again, thank you staff for all your hard work. It's amazing for us.
Commissioner Whitton?
All good here. Thank you.
And Commissioner Allen?
Good meeting. Thank you all. Appreciate the input.
And, uh, I'd like to say a very good meeting, a lot of hard work. Thank you to staff. Great, great presentation and thank you guys all for the discussion. And, uh, we're better together. And, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay. Second?
I will second it.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a great
Thank you. Bye.
Wonderful. Good night. Thank you very much.